All order?
Thank you, Mr.
Ever? We call a roll?
Yes.
Adams?
Here.
Princess?
Here.
Here.
Kurt? Stuart?
Here.
That's it.
Here. We have a quorum.
Cindy is gonna take over the operation of the public. That's a bold for the meeting, almost like a parliamentarian would. I found that I was fifty percent in the last meeting. Maybe after six or seven meetings I'd be, you know, but it just doesn't make those sound understood. So that worked just perfectly when I've gone through issues we could do in their sleep. By bold. So we'll start with that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion to review and adopt the agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Review of minutes of the September eleven meeting. Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion to review and consider the minutes?
Yeah.
Do we have those?
I haven't seen them.
And I haven't seen them.
You haven't seen the transcript?
No.
Okay, we'll do it at the next meeting. The minutes are not ready.
Okay.
Okay. So new business. We have a public hearing for Michael and Robin Morris, owners of the property at thirty-four twenty-eight Riverside Drive. They propose to enclose an existing flat patio with a three-season porch, including a roof that encroaches approximately fourteen feet into required setback of seventy-five feet to the water's edge. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Um.
Can I second?
Second.
Um, it's been motioned and approved to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The public hearing is now open. I do have some communications, written communications, that I will read into the record. I have a message from Sean and Jenny Steele. He writes, good afternoon, sorry I cannot make tonight a meeting. I wanted to let you know that, and the zoning board know, that I reviewed your plans and wanted to let you know that you have my approval and support. Hope all goes well. Thanks, Sean and Jenny Steele. They're at thirty-four sixteen Riverside. I have a note from Janelle Young for Carruthers. Hi Cindy, I just wanted to write a quick note to let you know that my husband Andrew and I are in full support of Robin and Mike Morris's proposed project. Thank you for your time. And that is thirty-four thirty Riverside. I have a communication from Mark Davis and Nate Peg at thirty-four twenty-four Riverside. We live next door to the south and have no issues with what Mike and Robin Morse are proposing. It has no detrimental impact on the neighborhood. We think it adds value and practicality to their properties. We also had another woman come in in support. She did not, I was not there when she came in, but she told Daniel that she's in favor of it and he did not catch her name. So those are the communications. And I did read the notice of what the applicants proposed to do. And I think at this time we would take a presentation from the applicants telling us what they wanted to do, although it's pretty self-explanatory.
Sure.
Step up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Michael Morris, thirty-four twenty Riverside Drive. We have an existing patio in the back of our house that has a stone wall encompassing that with footings and everything in their current. Again, that house, that house. We're just looking to extend the roof line from the current house out approximately fourteen feet four inches. And same roof materials, the metal roof. And then simply, we're gonna in case that area with windows and screens that match the current. We just need to build out. We'll follow the move, the wood deck and do a concrete for more stability so there's not rivers on there and things of that nature. Pretty dry. I think you can probably get it down in a few weeks. That's about it.
Thank you. Is there any questions about what Mr. Morris plans to do?
I have a question.
Yes.
How far over the existing structure will the roof line go? I know that it would be so long.
You know, to just cover the adding the stone wall. The current patio is twenty-two feet four inches wide by fourteen feet four inches deep. And that look will just cover that area. It's not gonna like jettison out over the, you know, towards the water just to cover the existing patio.
Okay.
I had a question. It's not a question, it's curiosity. As far as the private is concerned, there's a three-season room. Would it make any difference if it was a four-season room? I don't believe it would.
Not to zoning.
Okay. One thought would be that you make it a four-season room whether you use it or not.
Yeah.
Does that properly stand?
I don't think. Giving him advice, what he hear.
Well, I'm just a curiosity of my thought. I think I am.
I like, you know, we currently have hot water, heat floors in the house. So the plan that would be acceptable would potentially extend that to the addition. So it's got the heated floors and you could actually use it year-round if needed.
Would they even need a variance to do that?
No.
Not an additional variance. They're asking for a variance for basically three hundred and eight, even though it says two hundred and square feet. But if you're doing the outline of your patio, it's three hundred and eight square feet. If you're gonna do your eaves and so forth.
Sure.
So it's three hundred and eight square feet. Okay.
So Catherine is right. I believe I'm doing it.
If you look on the page of your packet, it has the orange line. That is not the property line. The orange line is the permitted building envelope where they can put the building without a bearing. So there's already part of their house that extends past the orange line. And the pink line is the new. So.
Just a note I did a little moment this morning. It was nice to go out and do that. Took a look at the stewards, how the patio and looked those ladies and those. No, I went by it on the Riverside. Looked later earlier this week. Beautiful property. Your next door neighbor to the south, Nate, he actually extends out a little bit further than what you were proposing.
Way out.
Way out.
Yeah.
Well, understanding all that, I get it. However, they are extending to the river's edge. And that to me is really is concerning. Is that they're increasing the, they're expanding the non-conformity. They're already several feet in front of the line for the seventy-five feet. But now they're going to be adding more. That's a little concerning on the Riverside. In my mind.
Even with this already being there?
Yes, because you're gonna get different water runoff. It's gonna be in a roof and then they're gonna have to put that water someplace else. But again, we protect our water's edge along the river and along the lake. There's a protection to that and that's why we wanted the seventy-five feet, even though I understand the house has been there before. So I'm a little concerned with that. Even though, as I read the ordinance, in regards to expansion, they are not enlarging greater than fifty percent. According to the expansion of section forty-ten twelve. If I read that correctly, there's no conforming use of any building or structure or any lot or parcel, which is non-conforming for reasons other than height, area or and/or parking and loading space shall be extended or enlarged unless all extensions or enlargements do not exceed fifty percent, which they do not.
There's another section that's even more applicable that I put on page two in your packets, the red two. And it's right toward the middle bottom of the page and it says, on parcels or lots situated in plats, which have been duly recorded prior to the date of adoption of the ordinance. And this plat was recorded in nineteen fifteen, so it's clearly before there was even zoning. Then, front yard, side yard and rear yard setback lines of principal buildings should be no less than the average established for existing principal buildings within five hundred feet on either side of the subject parcel. So if we can show that the average Riverside setback is a rear yard setback and they're in line or further away than the average, then.
But we don't have that.
I looked at the aerial views and it's very hard to see because of the tree cover. But it looks like on either side they are encroaching. The average setback is less than what they're proposing.
I have a real deal. Yeah, but again, you need numbers. I mean, if we don't have the numbers, I don't care what the aerial view looks like, but if I don't have the numbers, I can't make a judgment on regards to that. I get that.
Right.
Yeah, I. She just wanted to show. Yeah, perfect thing. So if we don't have the numbers, then that section is very hard to kind of grab onto. The other part that I and I guess the two that unless an applicant can bring forward that that is true, then I don't know how we would, how we can make that judgment.
Does he have to satisfy both those?
Yes, you have to satisfy all this.
Yeah.
Let's give it. So that those are the issues, as I look at the ordinance, that we don't have the answer. We are encroaching closer to the river. Yes, it was platted, I get that. But things change over time and it's considered non-conforming. Now, the expansion is, in fact, the one article in regards to less than fifty percent agreed, that's one. However, I don't have the average. So that's, that is problematic a little bit, in my mind it is.
One of those in regards here to drainage concern. I spent a significant amount of money last year putting drainage all around the house underground. Was threw down into the, down to the river. So it doesn't erode the hill and doesn't create any issues. So that was done on the backside of the house. And retaining walls were updated and stuff of that nature. So it's not gonna affect the erosion anyway.
Will this addition feed into that system?
Yeah, it was kind of.
I've been in pretty much all the houses on that street and they are all way closer to the river than that.
And the.
And they're all, and they're all new. You know, Martha Nate's is new, Carruthers is new. One next to it is new.
I get that, I get it, but without the numbers.
Right.
And I'm not doubting you, but I don't have the evidence. I don't have the numbers to that we can then put it in our minutes for support of that.
You might have it in their application when they instructed the two to the that would be to the south and the one to the the north, Carruthers.
I don't think the numbers matter.
I don't think they.
Because, and I'll tell you why. An average of what the other homes are, it's like a grandfather to me. This is planted a long time ago. And houses have come and gone and torn down and placed. They're not altering the footprint that's existing. They're not building additional footings. They're just gonna go vertically from what exists. And so I don't think it's a matter of actually that they're gonna build closer to the river. They're just gonna change what's above the footing. And in that regard, that's why I don't think the numbers matter. There are many new houses in order to close for this. And I feel like honestly, if that's a big concern, then maybe since I get it, it's time we measure it. If that happens, members of the board should admit it. I just don't think that that's a big deal.
No, because it's certainly about the lot size, the house size. That's number you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because we have a hundred and four feet. Martha Nate has fifty feet. Their whole house covers the entire lot. I've got, I'm one of the only houses that actually has a grass from it. So as far as that, it's not even close comparison.
And as far as preserving the river from this concern, I started taking care of it with this drainage system. This still will change now.
Right. But back to Kim's point about immediately including next door, how did that house get approved to be so much even closer? Because you can see that it's fifty.
Who knows when it was built?
It was built last year.
Well, then I don't know who did that.
Actually, it started two years ago. It's two years ago.
It's about four years, right?
Yeah.
It's an extensive house.
Yeah.
Well, he'd been built, I think, I think in the existing structure.
They kept, they kept one wall that went all the way to a corner.
Yeah.
Because that, that house is probably forty meters foot feet with a fifty foot lot. I'm nineteen hundred square feet with a hundred and four foot lot.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, we're all about the trees and the grass and the flowers, so we're not trying to pave everything here.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a vote on first condition that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions that apply to the property in question as to its intended use that do not apply generally to other properties or classes of uses in the same zone?
Anybody else have any discussions on that?
I don't, I don't see any exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions. I don't see it.
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion on condition number one. It's on page three of your packet.
If you need a motion, again, the motion would be, I do, there are not, there are no exceptional or extraordinary extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property.
Is there, is there support? Motion dies. Is there another motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
The property we, at the CBA, the last one we've actually done, which is down the street and was under the same basic circumstances, they weren't putting a three-season room in. And the houses on both sides of that were actually extended out further. So how do we get beyond this question?
Well.
When you go down the river, you can see that your property is actually pushed back a lot further than eighty percent of the properties along that same corridor.
True.
We can go back to the section that says this same section states that talks about the average. And that would make it different. And it is a small building envelope. If you look on the page with the orange line.
Is this very subject that the other houses around the houses, their houses, extend farther out for whatever reason they were granted that?
Visually, you can see where they do.
See what they were.
Yes.
So it's obvious this morning when I went out there that that's true.
Yeah, well, I go up and down there all the time.
To me. Is that the extraordinary circumstance?
Well, the extraordinary circumstance would be they're asking for the same condition as, obviously, we've granted for several others along the lake there.
Yeah, I think so. That's, that would be my opinion.
One, it's nice that the footings are already there, so you're not really digging into the looking closer to the river. They're already existing, or we're just adding a roof.
I mean, the other thing is, I don't know, how much room before the incline, just grass here, do you have twenty feet? That's unusual too, because most of the other homes don't have any.
No one's got any lawn.
Right.
We just have us. All just aside, portersides.
So as far as drainage goes, you've got an advantage right there, right?
So would somebody like to make a motion?
I, you guys, you better come up with a good one for exceptional, extraordinary circumstances. I think you're struggling. But let's go back on for the further number two. I'm not sure how you're gonna do this one either. The variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantially property right similar to that possessed by other properties.
We gotta do them one at a time.
I know, I know, but I don't know how you're gonna justify that one.
Have you stood, have you stood next to the patio?
Uh, no, I haven't stood next to it, but.
People on both sides of them have a substantially broader and deeper view of the river. And these houses are on the river for the purpose of enjoying the river. So there is a substantial difference from the enjoyment of this property, the view of this property, which is the reason people pay money for this property than those other two. And that stood out to me as I stood there.
Yeah, they've been blocked. Definitely blocked.
And for those of that, they're not gaining anything in that regard. They're not improving their view on bed.
They're just able to do it two more seasons.
Right. It's not this season to enjoy the winter.
Morgan, can you let somebody in? Cause we're supposed to be open.
There, there's a principle here too. This is kind of no good deed goes unpunished. I mean, the truth is that this house. Has a lower profile. Is a lower effect on the riverfront. Than virtually all the houses I saw around it. It's surrounded by them and towers under them, towers over them. And we're sitting here. You know, I realize that's not our job. To, we're supposed to apply these things. But. What are the external, exceptional, extraordinary circumstances? I think there are. It's, it's, it's a kind of inverse of what it would normally be. Normally we'd be looking at property that's looking. To do something outside. The area around it. Now we're looking for a property that's try, that's doing something inside the area.
Wouldn't the extraordinary circumstance be that basically everyone else has been allowed to do that? And they're asking.
I don't think you could take that into consideration. I, I, I don't think you can. Because we don't know when, what, what were the circumstances that the others were allowed to do it. You don't know that. So therefore, I don't know how you could make that judgment, but again, that's my. I, I don't know what the other people, I don't know enough. I, I don't know anything in the history of that properties or so forth, so I'm not.
Yeah, as a, this is a real question, by the way, not a criticism of these. As a practical matter, how would we do that?
I don't know. I, I don't know how you would do that. You'd have to go back to your minutes, I guess. As to why they allowed that. That variance at that time. I, for those other properties, I, you know, if, if they mentioned the circumstances. I, I don't know how else you would do it.
You guys allow the house to build right now, four houses down clear to sell. That is on the edge of the hill. Two and a half, three stories high.
Yeah.
Hour long.
Kind of saying that.
So to look over my deck. How that's a concern is shocking.
I, I, I don't, I don't know anything of any of the history, so I don't know why the, anything was changed. I can only rule on the application in front of me.
Like to.
Maybe improve that house.
Address the.
I don't know.
That are talking over one another.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's one at a time.
Well, I was gonna have you bang the gal to shut me off. This is for next Monday, remember?
I have a, I have a question. Probably for Cindy. The setback. From the river. Is at, what is it?
The setback from wherever required is seventy-five feet unless, from the water's edge, unless you have. Established an average of the houses within five hundred feet.
Yeah. Well, it's clear the average is closer than this structure. It's clear. All you have to do is go down through there. It's quite clear. So in that regard, they meet that requirement. And they're far, far away from the, they're far from the block. Where the others are on the blocks. They'll, they'll be.
And how do you measure the seven? Seventy-five feet? Is it from the water's edge going up on the angle? And then flat? Or is it from the water's edge going on the right side of the triangle?
Yeah, setback would be from the edge in, but. It looks like in the past it's been just up the hill.
Yeah, I mean, well, it looks like all the other houses are measuring up just up the hill. Cause I mean, you get seventy-five feet in the first thirty steps.
Well, it's based on the high water. So twelve years ago, when the water just flowed. And it was actually a sandbar to the south of me. And they imagined that for the neighbors that built out, you know, maybe three downs. They actually measured that like seventeen feet into the river. I would think of that as right, just because of water drop. So, you know, now that the water's dropped, I'm proceeding again, and so there's a variance. Again, we have so much. We're so much further back than any house on that. Street.
I don't think it's possible either to have a black and white. Decision by these boards on these matters. They change as the buildings change, as the populations changes, as this board changes. People have different opinions on how to interpret these things. That's why we're here. If it was cut and dried, it'd be the us and we answers. And we're here to make a decision about this property, not the ones beside it. For ones down the road. We're making a decision about this known product. And I think that's the main concern, not necessarily what some other board permitted at some other time.
I think those are the exceptional circumstances.
So would somebody like to make a motion?
Uh, I would like to make, make a motion that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. Or conditions applying to this property in question.
There's support? I will. If I can find my roll call sheet, I will call the roll. And we'll do them one at a time, all the conditions, then we'll do a general motion at the end. Adams?
Yeah.
Dritsas?
Yes.
Dritsas? Falcon?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Webster? No. Motion carries. Five to one. Let's look at condition number two. The variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right. Similar to that possessed by other properties. Other properties or classes of uses in the same zone. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant the granting of a variance. Would you, Mr. Chair entertain a motion?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm unsure of my position here. As an alternate, I'm allowed, I'm allowed to discuss things, but not. Prove, make motions, right?
Yeah. Catherine?
I move that the variance is necessary and should be accepted.
Is there support?
Second.
I'll call the roll. Adams?
Yes.
These are alphabetical order. Dritsas? I'm working on it.
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
And Webster?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Now, let's look at condition number three. The variance, if granted, will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property. And will not materially impair the intent and purpose of this chapter or the public interest. Would you entertain a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that. The variance. Will not have a substantial detriment and that be accepted.
Is there support?
Second.
Um, I'll call the roll again. Adams?
Yes.
Dritsas?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Motion carries six to, six to zero. Um, number four, item number four, the condition or situation of the property or its intended use is. Not of so general or recurrent a nature as to make necessary reasonably practical. A general regulation for such condition or situation. The chair would entertain a motion?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion that the use is not so general or reoccurring a nature as. May necessary practical, a general regulation for such condition or situation.
Second.
Adams?
Yes.
Dritsas? Dritsas?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
And Webster?
Whatever that particular condition is, I'll say yes, but only because I don't know what it means.
It means, what it means is rather than granting a variance, should we change the ordinance to allow it? That's really.
That's what it means?
That's what it means.
Oh, okay.
And with that average thing in there, I think that covers it, but. Okay. Motion carries six votes. Number five, any exceptional or extraordinary circumstances applying to the property in question are not self-created. And that means they divide the property and create a situation where there's a small lot.
So a move that is not, the lot is not, they are not, size and shape are not self-created.
I'll second it.
Adams?
Yes.
Dritsas?
Yes.
Falcon? Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then the last one would be. And to entertain a motion to approve the variance, which for all of the five conditions were found to be met and voted upon by the board.
Yes.
I so moved.
Is there support?
Yes.
Okay, Adams?
Yes.
Dritsas?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Kerr?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
And Webster?
No.
Okay, motion carries.
Uh, I'd like to give a record appreciation for Denise. Having a alternate view. It makes this board work. And uh, it's absolutely.
Gives us a very plenty to think about.
Okay. We have to have full comments from the public, you know? I didn't see Sean raise his hand, so he maybe doesn't want to speak and there's no other members of the public here. So we'll close the public hearing. At. Four thirty-four. And we'll go on to general public comments and correspondence. I have nothing. Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would.
So move it. Favorite guest?
We're done.
We're done. Next meeting is Monday, October two.
We can be useless Monday.